Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance...
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
And to the republic of which we stand. One nation...
One nation, under God, indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, Trustee Bussinow?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Clerk Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here, and Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Now we go to the approval of the agenda item with any corrections. Do we have any corrections, Ms. Posey?
No corrections, Madam Chair. I received a notice late this evening from Trustee Bussinow. I'd like to turn it over to him. He's requesting a proposed add-on.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Trustee Bussinow. Under old business, I would like to add discussion and vote of the plan to implement the creation of the Ethics Board as sent to board members.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Charlie Oliver?
Aye, Chairman.
Isn't this a special meeting and we're going to keep this agenda the way it's been presented to the public?
Yes. Yes, it is.
I think, in lieu of the problems we're having with the virus, I make the motion that we leave this meeting the way it's presented.
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute, Charlie. Charlie, you can't do that.
Okay.
You know, this is a meeting that's supposed to be for essential and critical issues. That's all meetings are supposed to be during this timeframe. And whether this constitutes an essential or critical issue, that's your decision to make. But Charlie, before you make your motion, there has to either... This motion by Trustee Bussinow either needs to fail for lack of a second or there is a second and then it is voted down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about interrupting, guys.
Pardon?
I said, sorry for interrupting.
Well, thank you, Mr. Craig.
Are there any motions?
I made the motion, so I'm looking for support. I'm looking for support.
I'll support that. Nancy.
Motion by Mr. Bussinow, supported by Ms. Nevers, to add the Ethics Ordinance on to the agenda. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Goodhue?
No.
Clerk Posey, no. Supervisor Dunn?
No.
That motion fails.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the bill, as usual.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? We need a motion to approve the agenda as presented then.
I'll still make... Charlie Oliver, I'll still make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Kathy Smith, I'll support that motion.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll again?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Oliver?
Yep.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn, yes. That motion carries.
Thank you. Now we move on to the approval of the bills. As usual, there are two bill runs. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time or Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bill run.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to... This is Karen Goodhue. I make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue. Support.
Support.
This is Nancy... Nancy Nevers. Supported by Ms. Nevers. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you. The previous meeting minutes are for your approval. They are the ones from March 11th, 2020. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, Clerk Good... I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from March 11th, 2020. That Ms. Posey...
Karen Goodhue, support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2020. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Clerk Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to public comments. I have received two emails from residents. They will be forwarded to the clerk for the record. Those of you that want to speak... I'm going to open the line for you to tell me your name and then I will call you up in order of the way you have entered your name. So is anyone out there that would like to speak?
Madam Supervisor, so they're going to need to raise their hands digitally after questions. We have one person right here. Mr. Charlie, would you like to talk and let's speak? I'm going to allow him to talk now.
Okay.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Who is it? We can hear you.
You're live.
Okay, this is Charles T. Vincent, 1684 Kenneth Drive. My comment is issued, guys. On December 14th, 2019, the Ethics Ordinance was finalized. Obviously, it's now the end of March and we have yet to appoint a board for the Ethics Committee. In light of the continued corruption at the county level and our well-documented history of unethical and illegal activities at the township level, it is way past time to make an Ethics Board a reality. If ever there was a no-brainer, you guys, this is it. My hope is that everyone on this township board will agree to start the process of creating an Ethics Board. And on that note, I hope that everybody is safe. Thank you for creating this meeting this evening. And you guys stay safe, okay? All right, take care. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
We now have Frank Cusmano. I'm going to allow him to speak. I'm new. Go ahead, Frank.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
1183. Attorney Frank Cusma... I'm sorry. Frank Cusma, 1684 Kenneth Drive. We had phoned in on telephone and we weren't allowed to digitally raise our hand. I happened to go back into my home office and put it on the computer, which took... I didn't think it was going to load in time because I have a lot of windows open. So there could be a problem. I want the board to be aware of. I fail to see how, if this is just for emergency matters, why the approval of the previous board minutes was so urgently necessary to be approved at this meeting while at the same time, old business of the Ethics Board is being delayed. I suggest that the board hold another special meeting as soon as possible because I believe that that matters just as urgent, not more urgent, than the current so-called crisis. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you.
We also have... We have somebody else to raise their hand. I don't have a name, but the phone number ends in 1199.
Is anyone else there?
Madam Chair, if I may interject. Ryan?
Yes.
The belief was that the attendees would be unmuted for public comments?
They are.
So those who aren't on... Okay, so they're all asking how are they supposed to talk? So they're not being heard for some reason.
Okay. Let's see. I'm going to go down the list and manually unmute them.
Okay. That'd be great.
Yep.
Eric Smith for Township, good supervisor. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've never done that before. My name is Matthew Sarr, 17869 Heritage, McComb, Michigan, 48044. First of all, I want to say thank you, guys, for having this meeting. All of you guys getting online and doing this. Pretty... I think it's great to have township government still functioning in these times. So thank you for that. My second comment would be in regards to the possibility of declaring a state of emergency for the township. Madam Chair, I just wanted to say that I've talked with... That I, as you know, in the past, not only am I a resident, but I represent the International Association of Firefighters. And I've spoken with the president there, Mr. Ryan Gearman. He was unable to make it tonight onto this phone call, but I wanted to call and speak in favor of declaring the state of emergency. I have had the chance to talk with other people at county levels in the tri-county area. There seems to be a lot of false rumors going around about the potential for what could happen. In this time, the firefighters believe that it's good not only for our board members to stand with our county, state, and our national government, the United States of America, in regards to declaring the state of emergency. With that being said, the firefighters also want to let everybody know that they're still coming in every day, still working, and they're there to help anybody that in need. Thank you again, and that concludes my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Anybody hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Yep. My name's Jeffrey Craig. I'm a member of the fire department. I'm the union president for all the paid-on fall and auxiliary firefighters. I just want to make sure the township board is aware that we don't want to run out of equipment. We got dangerously low when this virus really started picking up. Full support of the emergency declaration also. We want to make sure the supplies keep coming in. The firefighters don't want to run out of any of the personal protection equipment, such as the N95 mask, gowns, sanitizers, eye protection, and any other equipment necessary to battle COVID-19. As you all know, it's a serious virus that spreads rapidly. We don't want that exposure to be passed on to us due to lack of equipment. The emergency declaration, in our opinion, would ensure prompt delivery for federal, state, and county resources. We just want to make sure that the 90,000-plus residents are protected as well as us. As you know, 25% of the Detroit Police Force is currently under quarantine.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, this is Tom Sokol. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, township residents, my name is Tom Sokol. I want to thank the board for having this meeting tonight via Zoom conference. And tonight, I wanted to take the time to address Janet Dunn's alleged transgression that was communicated previously. As many of you are aware, our supervisor needed to self-report this alleged transgression to the U.S. Attorney. Reporting a transgression to the U.S. Attorney is much more serious than a parking ticket or a civil infraction. And residents want to know what it is. Madam Supervisor, we are waiting to be clarification from you what you self-reported to the U.S. Attorney. As many of you are aware, we've had an embarrassing week in our county with four employees, including a county prosecutor being arraigned. Two of the four were charged with misconduct in office. A local mayor was removed for misconduct not too long ago. Our supervisor has admitted to misconduct in office and she self-reported it. This is significant, but nobody is talking about this at our Board of Trustees meetings. And residents want to know more. Where is the outreach from the rest of the Board of Trustees? At a recent McComb County Republican Party meeting, a well-known political consultant advised me of a recent discussion he had with Clerk Posey. He expressed to me that it was his opinion that Clerk Posey historically challenged Janet Dunn on more than one occasion on open mic. I have seen that earlier in 2019, but have not seen that from our clerk for some time. Clerk Posey, the residents want to hear from you. They expect higher expectations from you. You are aware of the transgression of Janet Dunn. You were even seeking advice from an attorney whether you should report her transgression or not. But Mrs. Dunn ended up self-reporting. We would like to hear from the clerk, join Tim Bussinow, and ask for Supervisor Dunn to step down the supervisor. In light of the self-reporting, I would actually like to hear from the entire board their stance on Mrs. Dunn in light of the two previous McComb Board of Trustees members in trouble with the feds and the most recent four additional employees arraigned in our county. We would like to hear clarification from each board member on whether or not they feel Supervisor Dunn should step down the supervisor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yay.
Next?
Can I speak?
Whoever has a dog, if they could use their phone, that would be great.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Who is it, please? Say your name.
This is Feld... Feldy Cowal. I'm the Department Director of... Can you hear me?
Next.
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. Feldy Cowal, Department Director. I just want to say on behalf of the department head, I want to thank the entire board, especially Supervisor Dunn, Clerk Posey. And the... We're clearly on uncharted waters. They came together to make sure that the employees were safe. Clerk Posey was...
They were emailing each other, talking about how the township attorney was so bad, how they wanted to go on and talk all the shows. Like, listen, I can delete it, but it's not gone, you know? I can't go scrub up servers. Like, that's...
I'm sorry. I just... Am I... Something else there?
Too many people...
And whomever's... Whomever is talking about deleting an email between each other, you should know you're live.
All right, if I may continue. Again, we're on uncharted waters. They came together, they made sure that the employees were safe, they provided us with direction, all the tools to allow us to serve the residents remotely. I think they did a great job under the circumstances. Anyone who tells you differently is just looking to create problems rather than solve. Everyone came together as a team the way it should be under these circumstances. I'd like to thank all of them for all the work they did under these unprecedented events. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Dunn, it's Jeffrey Craig. I got cut off. I was almost done with my statement. Sorry if I resumed.
Go ahead.
All right. I believe I left off... I believe I left off with about 25% of the Detroit Police Force is currently under quarantine. And we certainly don't want that to happen here. We're praying that the seven of you can set aside any differences for right now and continue the emergency declaration until this battle's won. I would like to thank you all for your time and consideration that mattered. Any elected official... I'm sorry. If any elected official has any comments or concerns, feel free to email me or call my mobile phone number listed in the employee directory. Thank you for your time. I'm Doug Dunn.
Thank you.
All right, call it, tune in, supervisor.
Please state your name. Please state your name. I think that's the under-public comment, Janet. That's all?
Okay, can we have the IT people shut off the noise then, now?
Yes. I'm making a...
Yes, we can use the residents again.
You are muted. You are unmuted.
Anyone else out there that would like to speak?
You are muted.
This is Trustee Bussinow. Can everyone hear me? Because it just said I was muted, then unmuted. I just want to make sure everyone can still hear me.
The residents...
Okay.
We were all muted and unmuted too.
I'm going to end the public comments unless there is someone else out there. I don't hear anyone, so we will move on to the request to declare a 30-day state of emergency. This extension to the declaration is to keep McComb Township consistent with what the county commissioners approved last week. The county emergency management reports that as of 1:30 this afternoon, the number of confirmed cases keeps on rising. With that, I am looking for a motion to grant the extension of the state of emergency.
Madam Chair?
This is Nancy Nevers. I make a motion to declare, to extend the declaration of the 30-day state of emergency. I hope I did that correctly.
Charlie Oliver will support that. Was that you, Ms. Nevers?
Yes, you're with I.
Thank you. Motion by... Charlie Oliver supports it. Motion by Ms. Nevers, seconded by Mr. Oliver, to grant the extension of the state of emergency. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bussinow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you very much. We will move on to board comments, and I will call your names. Janet, you forgot general counsel update. Oh, I did. I'm sorry. Mr. Mann, are you there?
Yes, I am here. So I have just three real brief things. For those members that, and including Trustee Bussinow, are looking forward to moving the process and that for the Ethics Board, I do agree that that should be done. I think it should be done in a meeting, either the next or the next few meetings, where that is the sole focus. We do want to stay within the governor's process of only addressing those things that are emergency or essential. And today's meeting was not, as one audience said, to approve the minutes, but rather it was primarily for the declaration of the emergency status. But I do think that Trustee Bussinow has a very good point. And what I will do is look into that act and the process by which nominations the board members can be done and start that process for you. The second thing that I want to have you consider is that we're going to have to have these special meetings every month to make sure that the bills are paid. And so let's make sure we coordinate those along that line. And then, thirdly, we cannot do this in an open session meeting, but at some point in time in the near future, when we have a person meeting, I can give the board an update on what's happening with regard to the former general counsel and HR director. That's all I have for you guys. And I know it's clumsy, but it'll get better with the next one and the next one doing it this way.
Mr. Mann, if I may ask a question. This is Clerk Posey.
Sure.
I was reading through some of the things that we've gotten from McComb Township Association. And they had suggested putting measures in place should the supervisor have to postpone or cancel a meeting or if the bills have to get paid prior to the board being able to hold a meeting. Is that something we have to address at this time?
If that is something that you think is going to be a problem, then it should be a motion that addresses that so that the bills can be paid. And usually, that motion would be, you would have two board members review and approve the bills and get them paid. And then that would be retroactively approved at the next... be something to the effect of that, uh, the board approves, um, uh, the clerk and one other board member, um, to have the authority to review and pay the bills to the extent that a board meeting is not permitted, uh, to occur, um, at the time that those bills are due and owed.
All right, Madam Chair, this is Nancy Nevers. I would just like to ask you, uh, I don't have a problem with that, but I would certainly hope that we would defer those bills before anybody looks at them, you know, towards, uh, paying.
Absolutely.
We normally get a, we normally get something from Crystal, we look at it over and then the night of the meeting, so, uh, I would just like to be sure that, uh, that process is still in place even though, uh, two people will go ahead and approve it and it will go to retroactive.
Maybe a...
Clerk Posey is speaking. Yeah, Clerk Posey speaking. Yeah, Nancy, the bill run can still be distributed to all the board members as it always is. Uh, I just don't want, I, I, Stacy, our finance director, is very concerned about payroll and our bills getting paid in case time elapsed that somehow a meeting is not conducted. I just want to give her the ability to do that, um, as we saw with last night, seeing things happen, and it becomes unpredictable at this point.
I have no problem with it, with that stipulation. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for, uh, the board to approve the, um, clerk, eh, with, along with the finance director and the treasurer, Karen Goodhue, Goodhue, who will be responsible for issuing the checks, to review and pay the bills in the extent a meeting is not conducted to allow for the approval, and that they are ratified upon return to the next meeting.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Who supported it?
Whatever you want to say.
Ms. Nevers?
Yes, I support it.
Okay. All in favor? Uh, sorry. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
All right.
Yes. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. That will help the finance director and the treasury department immensely.
Yes. And one last thing, this is, uh, Greg speaking again. Please make sure, um, that you do not, um, create an Open Meeting Act violation, uh, by having three of you, or, I'm sorry, four of you, um, discussing at the same time, uh, any item like this, okay? So just be mindful of your communication, uh, treasurer and clerk, uh, that when you are, uh, in a situation where you have to approve the bills, and you may want to draw one of your other trustee members to look at them and give their opinion, make sure we don't get to the, uh, uh, quorum problem, okay? That's all I would, uh, um, ask you to do.
Do we know that? Thank you very much. All right, now we will go on to public comments, and, or, uh, trustee's comments, board members' comments. I will call your name. Ms. Smith, do you have anything for this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, um, thank, um, all our township's... Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
I just, I just wanted to thank all our employees for working remotely, working hard together, uh, to make sure, I know, um, to the county level it's been hard, and luckily we've all been able to work remotely, and I think the residents are getting the services they have. I want to make sure, please, everyone remains, please be safe. Call out to a loved one that you haven't heard from, make sure that they're getting what they need. Um, I know it's hard staying home, but we need to do this. I don't think we've even reached where we, our capacity at this point. Um, please take care of one another, be safe, and I want to thank the, um, all of you for what you do. I appreciate this and working with us to make sure that we're able to do this video and make sure that we are doing things right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Nevers?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I would just like to thank the, uh, Beth, Kate, and her people, uh, for the herculean, herculean efforts, uh, yesterday and against today to have this meeting go off smoothly. So, thank you, thank you, and, uh, everyone stay safe. Uh, this is day 16 for me in self-quarantine, so I'm doing what I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Mr. Bucino?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to thank all who serve our community, um, either at the board level, employees, uh, first responders, anybody. I know this is difficult times for, for everyone, um, all families, including my families. Um, we all have relatives that, uh, um, in, on some level, um, are dealing with things, healthcare providers, grocery store workers, um, I know I do, and I'm worried every day in these unprecedented times. I, I do want to state that I am not sure we had to take the step of extending the local state of emergency based on the recent actions of President Trump and our governor to receive disaster aid funds and supplies. However, I did navigate on the side of caution to support this declaration for our employees and our residents, but I do want to restate a message that is shared online, and this is a message to all our firefighters and first responders. We will move mountains to protect you. We have the budget, the will of the residents, and support of our local, county, state, and federal elected officials to get that done. We will take care of you, and I'm sure all board members agree with that, declaration or not. But I do have concerns, as I stated in emails to all of you, that I think there was an abuse of power, whether intentional or unintentional, using the local state of emergency as justification for that. It was clearly written out in emails from you to the board. Going forward, I encourage all, uh, to not use this declaration to abuse that power. Um, uh, stay safe in McComb. I miss seeing many of you in my roles as, as a teacher and trustee and, and a resident, and, uh, and I miss my church. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, well, cheers to the people, and thanking, uh, the local fire, rescue, I want to offer that to them, but I also want to offer a, a big thank you to all the hospital workers, and I think Tim, I think your wife is one of them included. Uh, we got to remember them and keep them safe. Uh, and I want to thank the rec, the employees of the township. They pitched in and they solved a lot of problems to allow us to have this meeting and do other things. And lastly, on the ethics, I want to make it clear, I am not against that ethics committee, board, uh, I come late to this. Uh, Kathy Smith also come late, and Dean Earth, we've discussed a few things on it, and, uh, there's, there's some questions. Uh, I think, I think it's come a long way, but there's a few questions, and Greg, thank you for, uh, adding what you added, because, uh, we could, we much be able to do it easier when we're in person at a meeting setting than on the phones. And that's all I want to have. Uh, be safe, everyone, and again, thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer's comments. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes, I just want to say that if you believe in prayer, please do so now. Thank you.
Clerk's comments. Ms. Posey?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just want to say that I've heard, uh, the residents' questions and comments, and, um, I will address those in the future, as I feel at this time it's most important to focus on our families, healthcare providers, first responders, and pray for everyone's health and safety. Um, I think we can address all those comments when we return to normality. Also, um, I want to thank all the department heads and the employees that came together last, in the last two weeks to help the three full-time elected officials, um, put together a plan to protect them, to ensure their safety while still providing services to the residents. It was extremely unprecedented. We had, um, leaders that were not feeling well during that time. It's unfortunate that, like, there was a grab of power that was attempted. That wasn't it. We were just trying to ensure that we could continue to make decisions, um, with regards to the safety of our employees and to service the public, um, in the absence of some uncertain days. Um, I feel like we did an exceptional job. Uh, we made tremendous, um, improvements and reacted quickly to the situation. So, I just want to say thank you. It was a collaborated effort of all of us, and I felt we came, uh, came out ahead of a lot of municipalities and put a lot of safety measures in place that hopefully protected all of us from, um, obtaining this virus. So, please stay safe, and, uh, we appreciate the attempt to work remotely. We know it won't be perfect, but, uh, it is appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I don't know if I can speak one more time.
Okay.
May I speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not quite sure what this abuse of power comment was. Um, I don't know if that was based on, um, the day the supervisor left. Um, my understanding, we all pulled together, the, the employees pulled together and finished a day. I, I'm not quite sure what the abuse of power was, but I want to thank, uh, Clerk Posey, uh, Treasurer Goodhue, all the department heads for pulling together for a day during the pandemic. I don't know if that was the issue, but everyone deserves a thank you for taking over. I'm glad that you're feeling better, um, Ms. Dunn. I'm not sure what that, that comment was made, but thank you.
Madam Chair, if we are going to respond to that, it was clearly laid out, this is Trustee Bucino, it was clearly laid out in my concerns to the board what the legal concerns are. I, even in this time of crisis, as, as a trustee, we, all of us need to make sure that we are going to limit our legal exposure. It was clearly written out in my concerns in those emails to the board. I think each and every board member knows the concerns I had and where the abuse of power came in.
Thank you. Supervisor's comments. Up till late yesterday afternoon, I was sure this conference meeting was not going to happen. However, two employees from DPI, our computer consulting firm, went above and beyond and got us where we are right now. A big thank you goes to those two people. On another note, on the TV in the last few days, there have been reports and videos showing ways to cope with the stress of the coronavirus. Hospital personnel dancing in the corners, musicians playing their instruments on street corners, five-year-old Benny holding a sign that says, "Honk when you go by." It was his birthday. A lady sitting in the back of a convertible singing with a bunch of people following her down the street. People doing crazy things on the video and posting it on YouTube. Taking care of your mental health is important, too. Try to make someone's day brighter by calling them or dropping off a thinking of you card. They'll feel better, and so will you. Above all, take care of yourself and your family. Bless you all in this time of stay home and stay safe. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Yep.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers.
Ms. Nevers, I'll second that.
To adjourn. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll one more time? Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bucino?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you very much, everyone.